All right, we are all here for a singular purpose. So with that, I would like to, actually, I'm sorry, I'll back up a little bit. There are a lot of people viewing online, so if I could have everybody up here at these tables introduce themselves, that would be fantastic. So Kevin?
Kevin Keith, Lightning Representative.
Joel Levesque, Elsted Representative.
Sarah Vogel, Ackland Representative.
Alyssa Bascom, I'm from Charleston, but I'm an at-large representative.
Deb Manso, Interim Superintendent.
Misty Foshee, Warf Clark.
Lori Schmidt, this was the administrator.
Thank you very much, and I know we have Shelley Andrews from Charleston with us via Zoom. I'm not sure if we have any other members.
Jamie.
And Jamie Chee, who is the other at-large member. So glad to have you both here, and thank you very much. Lori?
Okay, so a little bit of an overview. So proposed budget summary.
I don't want to see your slide.
So I've highlighted the total instruction costs, support services, and our general fund. And you can see that that is proposed to go up, the general fund, and those are the dollars that we raised for taxes, is opposed to increase by 1.95%. Then we have our other funds, which are our special revenue funds that include our food service funds and all of our grant funds. The combined total of the general fund and other funds is what makes up our total budget, which is the amount that shows on the warrant article number one that the public will vote on. And that is coming in at a 0.17% decrease. So just to want a brief overview of the budget process. I started in the summer, I believe in August, early August, meeting with Cory Levesque, who was our acting superintendent at the time. And we had discussions about what our goals would be and how we wanted to proceed with developing the budget. From there, I wrote, I developed and wrote guidance that we handed out to the administrators. And this guidance was based on a zero-based budgeting principles, which maybe, maybe we loosely, very loosely used zero-based budgeting in the past, but we were, we were pretty stringent about it this year. We've had many discussions with administrators about our staffing needs, and what does that look like? And, you know, as, as we went through the process of certifying our enrollment for the beginning of the year, that really played into our conversations that we had with each administrator. Something new that we implemented this year was a justification process. Again, we use zero-based budgeting, and our goal was to provide and prepare a transparent budget. And along those lines, we didn't want to bury in there or just arbitrarily add new projects, employees, new, new significant items that we wanted to bring them to or for discussion. So again, in the interest of transparency. Some of the key budget changes this year is that the health insurance rate increased 10.5%. Now, in the past, Health Trust has given us what was called a GMR, a guaranteed maximum rate. So we budgeted based on this random rate that was not to exceed, and then we would get our actual rate in March. This year, they started giving us our actual rate increase in October. So it, it did vary a little bit based on, we offered three different plans, and it varied for each plan. This 10.5% is what most of our employees are on, so that's reflecting a 10.5%. The total increase based on last year's budget to this number, this year's budget was $750,300. Our IT software and equipment lines increased by $75,000. Of this, almost $25,000 was for software that was implemented during ESR and paid for by ESR monies that we are continuing to use. And then we had, we budgeted for $18,000 of new software for our network system. In the past, well, I shouldn't say in the past. There is a process that we go through each year to apply for E-rate monies, which are federal dollars. And they can be used for technology infrastructure. Years ago, they could be used for, you know, our telephone infrastructure, they can't be anymore. But there, there are specific guidelines, we have to put, we have to prepare like bid documents and applications, and we go through that process each year when steer heads that. And we receive money each year, it's not guaranteed, but we have received money every year. Historically, what we had done is netted the revenue and the expenses against each other. This budget is reflecting the grossing up principles as required by RSAs and kind of standard. And so that's part of why we see the influx, is that we have $43,000 worth of E-rate monies that will come in to offset these expenses that in the past would have reduced our expenses in the budget itself. Now, that's being shown in our revenue stream, and the expenses are grossed up. So our full cost of the software is shown in the budget. This is the third year of the teacher's contract. The fiscal year '26 is the third year. And so this reflects an increase of over $62,203, which was approved when the contract was approved. Our special education out of district placement budget line decreased almost $160,000. And then it's important to know that our support staff negotiations occurred this year. So this budget that's presented does not include any increases for our support staff. There, they were, in year negotiation, it's stagnant, if you will, there's no increases. That is shown in a separate warrant article. We eliminated one teaching position and three parent positions, all due to changes in our special education needs. So I mentioned that the support staff costs are not included in the budget. This is a summary of the contract. It's a three-year contract. The average increase is 6.14%, and that's over the three-year term of the contract. And then there's listing our estimated cost. As you can see, in year one, it's higher because we are trying to bring wages up to a competitive level. And so that, that's occurring, that biggest increase is occurring in the first year. And then it levels out some. To the right, you can see what the projected tax rate increase is for this contract. All right. When we talk about budget this year, our proposed budget compared to the budget for last year, it always gets confusing. And that's because once we go through the voting session in March, our budget then becomes the sum total of each warrant article that's approved and passed. So when we're comparing this year's proposed budget, it doesn't include any warrant articles that we might want to, you know, present for public consideration. So what I was attempting to do on this slide is just to make it like, so we're comparing apples to apples. So your operating budget is always warrant article one, and that includes your general funds that are raised by taxes, and it includes the monies in your special revenue funds. Again, that's our grants and our food. RSAs require us to refer to that as operated budget, because again, our grants and the food programs are funding part of our operations. This, so that line one has the operating budget that was presented in warrant article last March. And then it has what we're proposing now. You can see that reflecting the, also a 0.17. I included the warrant article as a separate line item, because our budget this year doesn't include any increase at all for, you know, break the number of our, our staff numbers. And so I felt that to really be comparing apples to apples, we should consider that as though it were to pass. And that's not to say it will pass, but I'm just trying to show the picture of what if everything that's proposed on the table at this time were to pass, what's that look like? Capital reserves, we, while there isn't a tax impact when you use the capital reserves, because you have the monies already set aside, you're pulling them out to cover your expenses, they get included into your total operating budget once they have been approved by the voters. So I have a line there including the capital reserves, and that is the net effect of the use of capital reserves as well, and, and the addition to. This year, we're adding $250,000 to, I believe it's all the capital reserves excluding the high school. And then we proposed another $250,000 on our warrant articles that we can look at later, later this evening. There were no other warrant articles last year, so, you know, that brings us to our total, our all-in budget. This year, we're proposing a warrant article at this time for, to fund a feasibility study, and I believe that Alyssa will be speaking to that more in depth later. Again, this is just a reflection of what we have proposed at this time, and what would it look like if everything were to pass. So if everything that was proposed were to pass, there would be an increase in budget from this year over last year at one point, just with under $1.2 million, or 3.2% increase. So that's, you know, a little bit different than when you look at 37,322 to the, to a total all-in budget. It's misleading. By the way, that is the way that, that New Hampshire, that's the budgeting process. It's the way we have to report to the Department of Revenue through the voting process. And it's just, it's the way we, it's the way we're supposed to do it and have to do it. So, sorry about that, it doesn't really, it's not logical. Earlier, I mentioned the justification process. This is a summary of the justifications that we prepared this year. Again, it was our inaugural use of the justification process. So I think we learned some things this year, it'll be maybe a little more refined next year. In our discussions with the board, and so the justifications, we brought all of these to the board, and we discussed them individually, and they chose to either include it in the budget or, no, we need more information, we want a table discussion. So you can see that they added in, they, they approved the addition of an additional student service coordinator position. We increased our library assistant at Charleston Primary School to be consistent with the hours that are provided to students in other attendance areas. And we also funded NHDI costs for the local attendance area. This is a program that's been ongoing for a while, and it should, they thought that it should be considered a club at this point that would, that would be funded. We had several justification requests that were tabled, and they would like more information. Due to the timing of everything, we made an administrative decision to not bring these items back at this time. This included changes to a stipend matrix. We'll be looking at that later in the year when we have more time to really thoroughly vet it, provide and create, or create, provide job descriptions for the roles, make sure that the rates are competitive for the demands on time and tasks involved with the students and such. There was a request made for facility replacement van. We are looking at, into lease options instead of purchasing, and, you know, could it be tied into perhaps our bus lease when that comes up again? The high school requested funding for an athletic trainer. Currently, we have money in the budget for contracted services, but we have a difficult time finding the athletic trainer. Trainer is required by NHIAA for football games, and I think it's highly recommended for other reasons. We have many other sports that were very, you know, soccer and basketball, which are just as visible as, as the health. But we tabled that for now, because we need to create a job description, we need to gather some data with, from other districts, and what does this look like to have an athletic trainer on staff? So this will be presented again next year. There was a request for a maintenance van for the Transportation Department. This was tabled, we're looking at various options. We do have an opportunity this year through some other funding sources. And so we're, we will be able to revisit this later this spring. And then we requested a full-time CTE director so that we, to help facilitate development of additional programming. And at this time, there's this discussion of tabling it on a long-term basis. And we asked that it just, you know, let's say yes or no to it. And then we just, we all agreed that it's better to bring back additional information next year. This introduced the topic, it will be another thing that will work back with job descriptions and maybe some program development ideas and what that would look like. But that, that's a more lengthy discussion than just in a compressed budget season. So we have several open positions that are included in the budget, and I think Bill is going to speak to this, because there's a difference between looking at the budget and looking at the positions on the front line.
Hi, Bill Micky, HR Director. Nice to be here this evening. So I, I think that if I look back about a year ago while I joined, I know there was a lot of conversation of budgets being developed, the issue, the subject of vacancy management, looking for potential cost savings, given that it's very difficult to fill certain kinds of positions here, and those numbers were sort of quirky last year, I don't think you had a really good handle on it at the time. We have a really good handle on it now, and hopefully I'll leave you with that, with that aggression by providing the following information. So one thing to understand is if you went to our website and you looked at our open positions, right now, you would find a number somewhere in the mid-40s, 45 positions that were open. So this slide attempts to break down those positions into current staff positions, of which there are 25, and extracurricular positions, of which there are 20. So budget for the staff positions is 25 positions that are in the proposed budget for this year. I'm just going to run through them very quickly. Superintendent, we've got five teacher positions. I'm not sure if you can see this or not, but what I'd like to do is leave you with the impression that we're making a lot of progress against the openings that we do have. So we've got two TESL teacher positions open presently, and we have an interview scheduled with a candidate next week. We have a math, high school math position, this is an example of one that kind of rolls over from year to year. We, we got in touch with someone over the holiday, and we have an interview scheduled with that person on the 16th of January. Just today, I think, we had an interview with a special ed, high school special ed teacher, very experienced, and we will probably, in all likelihood, be making that person an offer tomorrow. We need to collect some more documentation, but things are looking up for that person. We have a Spanish teacher position open, it's a full-time position. We're fortunate enough to hire a half-time person who started today. So if all goes well with that person, that person will roll over and be contracted for next year, so we'll keep our fingers crossed in that. So that effectively means that we've got a lot of action going on all of the teacher positions that we have. In addition to that, we have a school nurse position open. We've hired someone two days a week for that position, we're still looking for a school nurse. And we have 10 paraprofessional positions open, roughly one to two in each one of the attendance areas. We have four related services positions that we're including in the budget that are presently filled by contractors. Those contractors are contracted for the year, so we need to begin looking earnestly now for filling those positions with non-contract, non-externally contracted folks, so we can get those folks on, on board. And then we have a couple of other positions. There is painter position, and this is an example of how things change very quickly. It's a very fluid process. So that position, I believe, you just said was eliminated from the budget, or you are, is that correct?
It has not been.
Okay.
We're just looking at that.
So that's something we're considering. But, so, so, so we have a couple of other positions, or a couple of bus driver positions that are in that number, a high school custodian, and a, I already talked about the school nurse. So that's in the budget. The positions on the right-hand side are extracurricular positions that are extremely fluid. So these are, you know, spring coaches, we have nine there right now. We'll be adding five more spring coaches tomorrow. Okay, so that number will go up. Those funds for the, the spring coaches and funds for class advisors, again, that's a very fluid number that will increase. All of that comes out of the stipend budget that Lori just spoke about. We have a budget, separate budget set up for substitutes, and we have one student custodian, a part-time person. So you add all those numbers up, it seems like we have 45 open positions, and technically we do. Almost half of them are stipend positions or positions that are substitutes for class advisors. So I think I can answer any questions about any of them.
Well, it's not as bad as it looks.
It's better than it looks.
Right. Well, it says it's not as bad.
Right. And it's one.
I would like to clarify that the stipend justification was for changes to the matrix. The matrix, as it has been approved in the past, is included in the budget. So the stipend positions are fully funded within the budget that has been presented. Substitutes as well, there was some discussion about substitute money, and the thought that perhaps it exceeded what we needed, or what we needed, because we were comparing it to what we've spent over the last couple of years. I went back and I asked our payroll person to review and pull data from our absence management system. So if a teacher is out, or an employee, when they're out, absent for any reason, they go into the system and write the, you know, submit the, the absence, and, and so it can be paid and tracked correctly. Some positions require substitutes and others don't. So if you need a substitute, it's reflected in the system that I'm going to be out today or for half a day, or however many hours, and I need a substitute. And so we were able to track what our need has been for substitutes over the last year. And then I categorized them, because we pay different rates for different types of substitutes. And, and then multiplied that out, you know, the, the number of what our need was and the number of positions that needed a substitute, and the cost of what it would be to pay a substitute if we found one. And I found that the monies that I had put into the budget were actually about $70,000 short of what we needed, based, based again on our need over the last year. So I did not make any further changes to the substitute line. You know, at that, at that point, it was, wasn't going to increase anything without discussion. So we have funding this year in the budget for substitutes, much more funding than we did this year. We're still at risk that it's under.
Thank you, Bill.
All right, so when we look at these positions and what it looks like in the budget, I've got the categories of employee positions on the left-hand side, and then I tried to identify if, if we're not able to find somebody to fill the position. There, there are like the support services, we are obligated legally to provide the services, so then we seek contracted services, and they'll vote to that. So we have two different categories there. I, I learned just recently that, that it's an option or potential option to be able to do that with student coordinators as well, and we're in desperate need of that right now. We have one position that we added, a new one for the budget next year. But the existing empty position that's carried forward, I've included that in a category that if we're not able to hire somebody, we're still going to come to the board and ask to make a budget transfer to use all of those dollars for contracted services. I identified, again, I should back up. The budget process begins with a snapshot in time. So these positions were sometime in October, when I, after our certified numbers were in, and that was the snapshot in time. So of those positions, we've filled like 40% of the nurse position. We build that, I believe, was a kindergarten teacher role that was down there. And then I identified what was still open, and then, you know, what I'm reflecting the 50% fill for the Spanish teacher. I updated it again today to reflect the interviews that have been scheduled or pending offers or what happened. So this just kind of gives you an idea of like, yes, we have, we have the 25 vacancies, and the total cost of our salaries and the benefits is just, it's over, it's almost 2.1 million. But of that 2.1 million, you know, over, over half of it's already like kind of spoken for. So we are making progress, and we just want to keep that in mind, because I do know that vacancy management is a discussion point, or at least it was last year. So I'm presuming it will be again this year. All right, so in the budget, we have built in 4% increase for administrators and non-union employees. That's all of our support staff, our technicians, our technology technicians, our, well, it's not all of our secretary. It's, it's staff within the secretarial support and administrative support within the SAU office. And so they're all currently at 4%. We're just showing what it would look like if there were changes made to the administrator, that would be the building administrators and the directors, what it would look like at different levels. Deb, did you want to speak to this now or later?
I did. Do you have those?
So after attending the Budget Committee meeting and hearing some of the concerns that Budget Committee members had surrounding administrative compensation, I'd like to be proactive, so today we, the administrative team convened, and we had a discussion around those concerns. One of the concerns was that our administrators, our principals, our central office people are paid quite a bit higher than other principals and administrators around the state. However, Bill was kind enough to take a look and do a comparison sheet with surrounding areas like Claremont and Tooket, Bike Mountains, Littleton, Sun and Pete, Menadon. And what we found is that, in fact, we are almost, we're right in there with everyone else. Our administrators and central office people are paid very closely to other folks in the area. Our administrators and central office people are paid very closely to, um, other, uh, folks in the area. So, uh, initially, when we talked about the four percent, there was a concern that, uh, we, we have these salaries. They may be higher than other areas. And now we're looking at, or we're asking for a four percent increase. And so now will that bump that up and, and will we be even further out, uh, as compared to other school districts? And, um, I believe the answer is no. I believe also that we have, uh, coming in as, as a interim superintendent, you really get the chance to, you know, closely with folks, uh, on.
But four and though, I think.
Situations and so forth. And it, it, within a few weeks, it was very evident to me that the principals and administrators in this dis- district are exceptional. Uh, they work long hours like, like everybody else does, of course. But they, they work with our most, uh, precious commodity, and that's kids and their parents and making sure that, uh, the school day for kids is a good one. Uh, as I've, uh, worked with the board also, I've, um, shared with them these thoughts. And the fact that there is a shrinking pool of people who want to take these jobs on. We need to support our administrators. And the board has been very, uh, complimentary of administrators and supportive. And I'm asking that you be supportive with a four percent increase as well. They've earned it. It's just one more way of saying we appreciate you and, most importantly, we want you to stay. We need the longevity. Because if any of them leave, I can tell you, as you, as you have experienced with the pool of superintendents recently, that it will be almost impossible to replace these people with someone as experienced and as knowledgeable. And, uh, just good, really good at what they do.
Thank you. Appreciate, uh, the board very much.
Hey, I want to talk about capital reserves. We have several, um, capital reserves out there, uh, some of which the boards are agents to expend and others, um, it, it must go to the public, um, vote, um, on the war. Our traditional capital reserve, um, that are used for building, um, needs. Um, we have one for each elementary school and we have one for the high school. And those are the ones that, that the publics, public are the agents to, um, expend. And these are for funding, maintenance, renovations, additions, including com- uh, consultation, uh, services. That's pretty standard. So, you know, that's, that's good to know. Um, we, um, I think over the years, we haven't been consistent about funding these. We're pretty consistent about using it. Uh, so some of the, um, accounts are, are getting, um, low balances. My goal next year is to, um, have a solid, uh, capital improvement plan that capital reserve funds. Um, and I don't think that we should be. The, the intent isn't to put in and take out each year. Like, it's, we need to be putting in and growing it for specific larger expenses, not normal routine year-to-year maintenance. Um, so anyway, that's, that's my, my spiel on those capital reserve funds. The others, we have a fuels and utility fund. We have a legal fund, a special education fund, a healthcare and district shared building fund. All of those funds, the board are the agents to, um, spend these monies. The fuels and utility fund, um, was developed to help absorb unbudgeted price increases that could otherwise result in a budget deficit. It does not have a large, uh, balance. Uh, the legal fund is, um, well, we're, we're still actually looking for the exact verbiage for when the warrant article was created. My understanding is, is that it's used, is restricted to, um, legal needs that result from special education, um, related costs. So that's, that's my understanding. And again, we're still doing the research, trying to find that, uh, specific language. Because the language when you create a warrant article is, uh, critical in defining how you can use it going forward. Special education can be used to decrease the general fund deficit due to special education cost. Um, when it was originally created, um, it was for unanticipated costs, uh, related to, um, uh, like out-of-district placement or residential placement. Um, so it was very specific as to when or how you can use those monies. Um, we believe, again, this is quite a project that, uh, I started and gladly handed off to Misty. We're gonna probably need some legal consultation as well at some point, um, because of some of the things that we've found. But it looks like maybe the purpose of that fund was tweaked a little bit to make it, um, a little more accessible. And of course, it still needs to be related to, um, uh, special education costs and, uh, a situation in which it's putting us into a deficit, um, budget. The healthcare, uh, is kind of the, uh, the most interesting, and it's the most sizable, um, over seven hundred thousand. Um, it was, uh, put into place and implemented when we were, uh, our insurance was self-funded and we needed to have some sort of, um, cushion to meet claim needs should there be a, uh, claim. And, um, so the, so the, the use of that fund is very restricted, um, for that purpose. Um, but that purpose isn't applicable to us anymore because we're no longer some insured. So we can't touch that money as it's designed right now. So the, the capital reserve fund is, was created and the, the purpose for which it was created, we, we can't access that money. Um, we would have to go through a process of, um, I, I think, um, terminating it and then, you know, for there to be discussions for like repurposing. But that's, that's for another day. I just wanted to, again, touch on the fact that that money is out there. It served a, uh, definite, met a definite need and purpose when it was created and put there. It's no longer applicable to us and not use it. Um, the district shared buildings, um, I believe that's also for funding, maintenance, renovations, additions, including consultation services. And that's for like the, the facility and transportation maintenance buildings. I don't know that, I don't know if it would apply to the SAU office where we rent, um, but that's, um, another warrant article that we're still looking for, uh, the exact language for when it was created. So those are the capital reserves that are out there and, um, um, just which ones we can touch and which ones we can't, how we can do some. All right. So this brings us to the default formula. Um, default, it's defined in the RSA is how you calculate the default, um, budget. It's not really a budget. It's a calculation. It's a formula. Um, and you start with your appropriations that were approved from last year. And, um, you reduce or increase, and if the case may be, by debt service contract obligations previously incurred or mandated by law, and reduce by one-time expenditures contained in the operating budget. This is where we're like, right now for the, uh, default calculation versus the proposed budget. You can see that the default calculation exceeds the proposed budget by three hundred and fifty thousand. I think that we're going to be having some additional discussions this evening about the budget and, uh, who knows, that may, um, our discussions and decisions may impact this. Uh, it would not increase the default calculation. Um, and that is the conclusion of my, uh, phone review. Uh, we have warrant articles to discuss. I don't know where we want to go next.
Well, I think I'd like to open it up to the board for questions or suggestions and changes to the budget at this time. Uh, thank you very much for all of that information laid out so clearly. So I know, Kevin, did you have anything you wanted to start with? Just go.
Nothing specific. I am looking at the, uh, tax rate sheet. It's called projected tax rates sheet, um, from our working drive. I just got my tax bill on Christmas Eve. Merry Christmas.
Yeah, it was, that was a good.
And, um, our tax rate was seventeen dollars and seventeen cents, and you're recording sixteen ninety-seven. Is that going to be updated?
I did update. So the tax rate that was in here was the school tax rate. I took it from the documentation from the DRA. So was your tax rate, the full tax rate?
No, that was, that just said that you were local.
Local schools.
Local, local school.
Does Lingan include sweat in that number? Or do you do a separate line or?
I will look at that, but I, I downloaded everything.
It's different for that. We develop for Act One too, and it's different for Act Four as well.
Yeah. Interesting. Okay. My apologies. I, because I went straight to the DRA and downloaded the.
It'll just make the, um, increase look
Different.
Looks. So my other, the general comment is I am concerned about, um, we talked about this in here, how, um, is, I really want our, the warrant article for support staff to pass. And, um, I'm very concerned about it passing if the budget stands the way it is. I don't know how to decrease the budget. But I am very concerned about the, um, that warrant article passing because our budget is, um, because that increase would be, you know, three dollars fifty cents or so, kind of total.
Thank you.
I can't see Jamie or Shelley, so if you have something you want to say, just speak up. Joe or Sarah, did you have anything you want to?
It's not.
No, I've been over this as much as I can.
I do have some thoughts on the painter position. Do you want to consider asking that to be taken right out? At this time, it's been open for a while. There have been no applicants. Do you want to continue to fund that? Or do you want to ask that there be simply a cut in appropriation for hiring outside painter community?
Are we currently getting outside services for painting, maybe painting done then? Is that what we're doing?
It's not painting. Uh, maybe it's not the, it's right now, our, our, um, facility staff is filling in and doing, and, and there's a painting gap. So I mean, I, I think our biggest painting project was the last summer when we did Charles Town renovations, and, uh, that was covered by volunteers.
I have a question.
I don't, I don't answer for you. My question would be is, you know, do we have a job description for that painter and would they be busy full-time as?
You have jobs for the position. Can't say what they would be busy for full-time, whether that's in what we, but, I mean, that's what we assume when we close the position, that it'd be full-time position when we hire you.
But it's sounding like people are just filling in and it's not. Maybe, maybe there is.
I think there's, there's stuff that's not being done, but, um, I can't speak to whether it's a full-time.
Most of our principals are here. Do you have deferred painting projects in your buildings?
Justin, that's right. It's fall. Um, there's a lot of, uh, painting projects that we have in all three buildings that have been pushed aside because we have not had, um, the staff to do that. So there are many projects that are still in need to be done, but we keep kind of pushing those ones off to, off to the side, uh, currently because of us not having that position.
You've got essentially the consensus there. Um, this past summer, my music teachers, my music teachers painted a room. They spent most of the summer in the room painting, uh, rather than working on curriculum or anything like that, uh, just to get a ready, uh, one of the art rooms ready for, for the school year.
Um, and also that I can tell you that some of the painting has not been done since I was hired thirty years ago. So yes, we continue to push those projects off, knowing that we did not have anybody who actually execute the performance of that company.
Sounds like the consensus is so. Without, have we even had any applicants?
Yes. One of the discussions we had this morning, uh, with the budget, um, meeting of the administrators was to possibly take that position out. And then, um, move some of that funding thing to contracted services and possibly work at getting some of the high school seniors who turned eighteen to be employed over the summer with those contracted services that have the paint. So we're trying to be real creative about, um, being able to hire somebody. It just doesn't look like hiring a painter position is going to work. We could put some funding in contracted services as a suggestion. And then look at the budget next year, see, did we use all of that? And then maybe we need to increase that with, uh, more funding so we can get some of these projects that folks need to accomplish.
I like that idea. I'm concerned about deferred maintenance, especially if it's exterior deferred maintenance and we start to have rot and all that kind of stuff, which is just even harder to fix later on. So, um, I think moving into contracted services or at least moving solid to contracted services makes some sense.
This is Jamie, and I'm sorry if I'm interrupting you because I can't tell who's talking. I had sent a couple of companies' information down to Lori. I shared with her. Uh, because we outsource a lot where I am. And I outsource a lot of custodial. I outsource ten or twelve custodial positions. And the two companies that we use for outsourcing for custodial have painters available. We put about ten or fifteen grand in our budgets per building. Um, depending on where we're at in our painting, uh, rotations. And that more than covers the folks who come up to do the painting for us from, um, ACP or Metro West. They're both out of Massachusetts. So I, I would be in favor of cutting that position because it's a heck of a lot more expensive to carry a position. Um, and I think you get it done piecemeal that way. Whereas if you can hire crews to come in, they get it done much more timely and quickly over the summer months. Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie. Shelley, do we have it?
Um, I'm in, I'm in favor of putting some money in contracted services and doing it over the summer.
So it sounds like we have a consensus. Do you want the motion to make that change or are you just? The essentials are awful.
I, I think that, um, we have, we have that direction. I don't think we want the motion.
Any other questions or concerns with that? All right. There's one thing we can affect.
Um, so I, I, I guess I do have a question. Um, uh, Jamie mentioned they, they put ten or fifteen grand. We were thinking of twenty, um, district mile? Yes.
I think that's a good start.
Where we have deferred painting. I just, I don't, uh, we don't currently, as you know, we don't have a capital improvement plan. Um, and I don't believe that we have a painting schedule as, uh, Jamie referred to, um, we, I've, um, initiated these conversations, so, um, we'll be working on that. So twenty thousand is agreeable, but. That's what we'll do.
Thank you. That was my only. Thing I saw in the presentation that we didn't really change today. Does anybody want to talk about? The administrative rates? Or are we comfortable at four percent spending for the best part?
I'm in favor of the four percent.
I think that especially the.
National average COLA is two and a half. For this year. CPI was at three point seven for last year. What was the raise last year? What was that?
Four. I concur with Dr. Menso's. Analysis of our administrators. I think we are incredibly unfortunate. We know that our district has some things that we deal with that. Are just heavy. And so I appreciate that all of you are on the front line of that. For our kids and families. But I also think that we have some people in this district who are struggling and who may only be living on that two and a half percent social security COLA increase. And so for that reason, I would like to consider. A three percent increase in the budget. I don't know how anybody else would feel. It's a very small increase to the budget, but I think it does speak to our. Taxpayers and our voters that we also feel that they may not be getting any increase this year.
Goes back to my concern about passing the support staff. Warrant article, and I think. If we can make that change this year with maybe next year, we can go back up to four percent. With just the hopes that we, as we can decrease that budget any way we can to get that to support staff so they can make a living wage.
I think that's an excellent point.
First, and then consider other increases after. Three percent is.
Thought when compared to the other.
That's a person that's. Hopefully possibly going to become part of your support staff. I'd rather abstain.
I guess that was, originally I was, I was. Seemed like it made sense to go with the four, but I do, I agree that we really do want the. We want the support staff. We want that to go through as well, so I would, I would agree with.
So. So Jamie, I wasn't sure exactly how you fell on that. Do you want to weigh in?
Sorry, I was just giving you the stats. It's always a hard discussion, right? Because there are other benefits that we get that other people don't. And I, I'm speaking as an employee now of a, of a district, right? You know, I haven't seen where, I, I don't know where our wages sit for our folks. I think I would have been. I trust that what Bill says is true, but I would have liked to have probably seen what the numbers looked like comparison, which I can pull them myself probably, but.
Can I see the document that Bill provided to us? I'm just gonna send you a picture.
Okay, so. So are we in the middle of the folks around us? Are we higher?
It notes that the average is for a high school, it's one hundred and eighteen thousand eight hundred and four, and we are right in line with that. So. I think we've been very good at looking at what the area can provide and sustain.
I mean, in looking at the dollar amounts of what Lori shared, you know. I think it would be more, it's not a big difference. Well, it is from three to four. That's sixteen thousand dollars, right? So I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a gesture, right, on the administrator's parts that. They're trying to be prudent about where the money's being spent. You know, and just if anybody wants to know, we got two percent where I am. I've never had a four over four over four. So, and I've been doing this nineteen years, so that's just, that's just, maybe I'm working in the wrong place. So I mean, I will go with the will of the board. You know, I don't want to go below two and a half because that's where national COLA is. That's obvious, right? I don't know where CPI will come in on July one. I know where it's trending right now.
Okay, so at this point, it sounds like we are. In favor of a three percent raise for our administrator. And Joe, I don't know as though this affects the support staff contract.
Yeah. I don't. But that's fine. I'm, I'm really. Been a lot of my business trying to help.
So to be clear, unless anybody's going to object, we are good with amending. From four percent to three percent. We lost it. We appreciate you, but this is not a reflection of how we deal about job performance and such.
It's absolutely true.
So again, after attending the budget committee meeting last week and. Hearing what they were thinking of as a number. And being, and the belief of being proactive, we called everyone together today. I sent an email on Friday and said, let's sharpen our pencils. Let's see what we can do. So I will tell you that first of all, zero-based budgeting has done exactly what it's supposed to do. Which is to have everyone look at every line. Ask good questions. And really determine what is the bottom line. For each. For each town, for each school, so that we can move forward in educating kids. So it's very tight. So having said that, we, we did go back and sit down. And each principal. As well as the administrators. Talked about what they felt, where they felt they could cut a little bit more. And so without going into the detail of that and also being concerned about some of the additional things. Such as the contract for our staff, our support staff. We were able to come up with two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. That does include the painter. That does include the painter, so if we.
We already got to that.
Yes. That does include the painter.
Yes, it does.
It did, okay.
And the, and the contracted.
And, and putting some money in the contractor because we talked about that this morning. Now, the budget committee has also talked about doing the vacancy. Am I saying it right, Lori? Vacancy management. I think that we really need to have the same discussion that, and presentation that Bill made. So there's real clarity around what that could mean. Because they were talking about another two hundred and three hundred thousand dollars around. The vacancy management and I'm not. I, I just want the board and the budget committee to really think about, is that going to? Is it going to do what we want it to do? So the vacancy management really comes from, and you probably already know this and have heard this. But it comes from the idea that at the end of the budget year, we have money left. So the public use that as you taxed us and we've given money. You said you were going to spend it, but here we have this pot of money. And I think we may, if we do vacancy management with. Knowing how effective HR has been in hiring people. We may be exceptionally tight with the budget. To the point where we may say we don't have enough money to hire the people we do. I don't want to see us get into that position. So thi- this is a conversation, a very serious conversation with the budget committee on Wednesday night. Does, does that make sense?
Absolutely. We were not having the same conversation last year. We were not having success in hiring, with even with applicants. And so. Who knows, for the HR department for the outreach, it's been.
Because also our, our support staff contract being approved. That's approved, we will be much more competitive. And hopefully we'll be able to find paraprofessionals and bus drivers, which is our biggest position, paraprofessionals are the biggest thing we have open, so. I'm hopeful that that passes and we can fill those, start to fill those positions. And with the changes to the. Insurance, so people can afford some insurance, but still starting, a starting wager. Concur that might be a different animal next year if that passes and that we should. Want to, you know. Plan for.
Lori, do we have an idea what the budget would look like with the cuts that were made by the administrators today? I did not get that part. That, that, and so the, the. Cuts that we're looking at also include two additional positions, so that would impact the, that would flow through to the budget as well. Where are those positions? It was a, let's see, a para in. Classroom aide in that local primary and. A bus wait position, and so not the, not the aid position, but a bus wait position for. That's not fair. So, so they're not, they're not huge, but they will have some sort of. All right, is there anything else in that that you'd like to share with us?
What version are we on?
Two point oh.
What version of the budget are we on? Because the last one, I think I got in total. This is a new version because the numbers that you shared tonight don't, don't match one point two. So are we on one, three?
We're on two point oh.
Two point.
The budget committee discussed. It has had what's in our folder.
Okay.
Oh yeah, there is one other para position and it's a vacant position that Charleston. So we're cutting it and not looking to fill that direction. And that's, that was quick. All right, well, thank you for. I just wanted to reiterate what, what Dr. Menso said is that. It was a collaboration, like everybody looked at, and so this number is, has contributions from every single department and building. Been a process this year and I, I am very pleased to hear that all of that has gone on. I've seen it go from version one point oh to one point two, now at two point oh, and it's been refined every single time. So for the public that's here and they may be listening. I've been looking at this, can we find her for years and this is really the first time. I'm comfortable with what's in it. I've never been able to say that. So. Good. Then I think we have a number that we can, we can, Wednesday night, two hours of our meeting with the budget committee. So I'll update those tomorrow and. All about to sign it out. All right, for anybody listening and anybody here that is going to be here at six o'clock on Wednesday. I think it's six o'clock. Six PM or five thirty?
When would you start, five thirty?
Oh, my apologies.
Five thirty, sir.
I would have been late. So five thirty on Wednesday. Five thirty, so. I thought we were joining you. All right, is there anything else with the budget that anyone would like to discuss before I open it up to public comment?
Are we going to discuss that hundred thousand?
We will get to. Warrant article. Not in here.
Well, I know there is. Several people who have another meeting at seven o'clock and we were hoping to finish by six or five, but I.
My. Chairman of the Throwing Board contacted me and said that we're not doing the hearing tonight, so I can be late. Probably should essentially.
Okay.
Through the select board will do their first bid. I know I won't be there at seven, so I told them I'd be there as soon as I could.
Perfect, thank you gentlemen. All right, then let's go through Warren before we open up the comments. We've gone through them. There are some changes.
Okay.
You sharing that. All right, so I don't know how much time I need to spend on Warren, but one, that's probably a lot.
Would change anyway, so.
So Warren Article Two is the. Support staff contract, which I showed on the screen. Warren Article Three. This is for. Sorry.
I can just real quick on Article Two. I, I just sent a question to Deb and I'm sure with the rest of the school board. At the, at the end of last year, I believe, the school board decided to return about a million dollars. From surplus, is that the number? I don't remember the number.
It was, it ended up being a seven hundred something. Seven hundred and something.
Seven hundred and something, okay. And based on the projected tax rate. And the new tax, and their actual tax rate, there was a savings of about eleven cents. So it's like seven hundred fifty thousand dollar certain return is only eleven, about eleven cents came back to the. It might not be the same for every town. I don't know how that calculation worked. We're talking about a five hundred thousand dollar increase and there's a thirty-eight cent increase for laying. We're talking about a five hundred thousand dollar increase and there's a thirty eight cent increase for Langdon. Which just I just my my math brain says I don't know how that works. So I've sent that question off and I'm I'll get an answer.
Okay, so Article Three is we're asking if the Alstead elders would vote to appropriate forty thousand for capital improvements to the Alstead Elementary for asbestos abatement and for Villas Middle School to install a mini split and enlarge the music room. The set funds to come from the Alstead School Capital Reserve Fund. So that was a larger amount before, but in working with Kevin, we prioritized what our needs were. And this this is what we're, this is where we landed. We are looking at for the music room area is removing the divider wall between the locker rooms to enlarge the room and you know, fixing tile and flooring that would need to be done with that. It would be internal. And then the mini splits, I think, were twenty nine thirty, another ten, and then the asbestos is twenty five thousand. Okay, thank you for bringing that up. Article Four, we are asking for a hundred, I don't think this changed, a hundred and six thousand two hundred and thirty eight dollars for Charlestown for improvements to the primary, Charleston Primary to replace ceiling, rebuild playground fall zone, replace classroom sinks, add hot water and in Charleston Middle School to replace the walk-in freezer and refrigerator and repair the hallway and repair the fence in the field with set funds to come from the capital reserve fund. The next Article Five, this was had been a discussion the last time. We have been working on pulling data together with the brief. It was a little bit difficult. We had don't have the full justification pulled together. I know that Corey is available on the phone if we want. If there are any questions that you'd like to speak with her about. We've had incidents where people have fallen in the interior stairwell. The facilities put rubber strips on the stairs to try to prevent some of that from happening and that caused other problems that people were falling. It is not ADA compliant, and so we'd be interested in putting in a lift to get them into the building from the front. And we do have an email quote of costs of just under sixty grand from Frank. Anzalone, Anzalone for the various drawings that are needed and so Bill was recommending a markup by seventy because there's a little bit of overage. So that's where that number came from. But we don't have the full justification available for you, so I don't know if what the thoughts are on this. Shelley or Jamie, do you have any thoughts on this?
I'm listening.
Um. I'm still not. I'm still not sold on that and I know that Corey can answer questions and maybe I'll reach out to her, but I'm just not sure that there's enough information to to really move forward with seventy thousand and bringing our capital reserves down in Charleston even more because that's what I'm reading is that's just for the design and engineering of it. That's not even for the work, correct?
Correct. I concur and then looking forward with several more articles for the same additional seventy thousand dollars for each one. I just feel like it would be better spent for us to look at putting those three things together during a package and coming to to the voters next year with a plan. Instead of spending seventy thousand piece meal from capital reserves. But. Or how anybody else feel. I do want to point out that the other seventy thousand dollar item on here was with Walpole and that it was a thorough justification was provided for that and that was as a result of the site-based committees and a request that the the community is wanting and encouraging.
That was the expansion of the Walpole School.
Yeah. That's that's Article Seven. Yes, please.
So is the idea with this that that the that the study, that this that this these architectural drawings and these engineering plans would come out of capital reserve and then the possibility depending from that, there might be a possibility of a of a bond or something else and if 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 it weren't, if there wasn't any, if there wasn't enough of capital reserve left to do the actual work. Is that what the idea is? That we would know what exactly we need to do?
Yeah, I think we're looking to see what we actually need to do and what the cost is and then we would have to develop, we'd have to figure out what that looks like to cover it. So it could be potential for a bond.
So we always get asked this question at delivery session for a budget hearing. How'd you come up with seventy thousand dollars?
So the seventy thousand was based on a quote from the original architect. The quote is just under sixty and Bill. So I'm I'm hearing. I'm hearing from Corey that she's fine on waiting on us so we can remove this.
She's fine with what?
Two point.
So wait.
I think it's absolutely important that we do start having this conversation, but I don't think there's any need to rush it. I appreciate the information about where the owner of King's Front Pole Walpole, if there is interest in the town already and they've got plans going, then there will be somebody to speak to it. And and I think that is well within the views for these capital reserves and we can move forward. I think we we small work in Charleston. But that that makes sense. I like that. Does anybody on the board want to continue discussing this or are we good taking that off for now?
I'm I'm good with taking it off, especially if we're talking about a bond. Doesn't make any sense to do anything right now with everything up in the air. Spend seventy thousand on a possible bond in Charleston. Yeah, so I'm perfectly fine with removing it at least for a year.
Jacob Keane from Charleston.
Hold on a moment, please. Are we good with taking public comment before that? Sure. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
You should look into ADA grant.
Absolutely.
That school has another entrance, does it not, that is compliant?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Article Six, where it's for Walpole voters to incorporate twelve thousand in capital improvements to the primary schools to abate asbestos in four classrooms. That doesn't make sense. That number can't be right for asbestos. So it's supposed to be a hundred and twenty. Let me, you know, score should be a hundred grand. Missing a zero, missing something here. So I'm just looking at the capital projects list, which was also included in the folder. So it's twelve thousand for vinyl siding. It should be a hundred and twelve thousand because a hundred for four rooms of asbestos. So it's. Yeah, so that's gonna. Okay, so we've updated that already to be a hundred and twelve thousand from the Walpole Capital Reserve and this is to again, abate asbestos in four classrooms and to replace vinyl siding with funds to come from capital reserve and the vinyl siding is at the primary school as is the asbestos abatement. We have been carrying a masonry project that we've been having difficulties getting, obtaining a quote, so I am working with Bill to put it out publicly in newspapers to obtain quotes and not just reach out to people that we know. But that will have to to wait. I don't think we'll have that information in time for this year. So now on to Article Seven.
Just change that twelve thousand one information.
Yeah. So in Article Seven, it's for seventy thousand to hire a qualified firm to prepare the engineering and architectural drawings. So again, we use the quote from the architect that was received, they'll receive the email to as a basis for the seventy grand. Justin had prepared a nice justification and about the site basis, site-based committee's concerns and the goals and they're looking to expand the the school. I think that that would be then so you could have all of your elementary kids at home location.
Yeah. We've been having discussions of closing the North Walpole School and we want to just give community members and families the options of, because right now there's currently, I think, four or five that we can possibly do and we want to make sure that the community supports what we want and then having these discussions at our site-based meeting of possibly adding on three classrooms at the primary school or five classrooms, depending what they want. And being able to do the architectural drop so they can visually see that and then we can properly present that next school year and start that early and so we can have our our meetings with questions and answers and having tours and everything like that. So families do feel more comfortable. That's the purpose of that.
All right. Um, so this is updating the numbers. So we're going to stay on Article Eight with the new article. This is to appropriate ten thousand dollars to hire a qualified firm to update engineering and architectural drawings for secure entrance office space and auditorium updates to the high school. So I know that this was discussed at the last meeting and the comment was made that it should be seventy thousand. We I was given ten thousand dollars as the number, which I believe is the accurate number because we have existing drawings and we should be working, starting there before we're doing out a lot more money. So we're working on getting those drawings. Putting our hands on a copy, I guess, and so that then we can work with Sarah. But those drawings only address the entrance and secure entrance and did not address at all auditorium dates. Okay, I. Does anybody have any objections to moving that one article forward?
I think the amount is good. We did this with two of our buildings and the architectural firms were between ten and twelve grand.
Okay. So in Article Nine was, should we raise and appropriate two hundred and fifty thousand to replace the district's capital reserve fund with a breakdown? And I think this only includes the elementary school, but does not include the high school. All right, so then. The high school has this. And then we move on to the article where we're asking about raising and appropriate a hundred thousand for the purpose of hiring a qualified, nonpartisan, third-party firm to conduct a study of the feasibility and suitability of the withdrawal of one or more pre-existing districts from a cooperative school district under provisions for, say, one ninety-five twenty-one. So we had a discussion about this here and there were some questions about whether that was a district expense or whether it was an expense at the town that was requesting the study. And so we met with Matt and our council today and his recommendation is that it should be the town recommending the study or requesting the studies to have that portion as part of their direct expenses, which our articles agreement support. So he's in the process of putting together a warrant article that would support that. And the reason for doing it is we are pretty well tight in the business office in terms of having somebody who can call reports, get information out for this feasibility and suitability study, should it be voted on at any town. On the market value. So with this amount, he recommended being around fifty thousand dollars, not a hundred thousand dollars. With that amount, he could hire somebody to be in the office to fill the need, the requests for information or put it out to a company like MRI, where we had hired Joe Jack a few years ago from somebody who's well versed in school accounting and such, who would be able to make the reports out, send them out, not do any interpretation of them for the study. That would be clearly the study's responsibility. But at this point, I think it's very important that we have somebody who can fill the need for this study. And I think anybody who was part of the last study in two thousand nineteen would concur. Your view?
So this fifty thousand, not a hundred thousand?
That was the suggestion from Matt Upden, yes.
And I was going to add, one of the other things that I feel makes this necessary is the short amount of time. I believe it's a hundred and eighty days. So when reports are requested, we have to be agile enough to be able to provide them in a very timely manner. And knowing the amount of work that there is in the business office that very frankly, it's going to be difficult. Another point is that having a firm or somebody from the outside really provides the committee with someone who, even though I know Corey would not be biased, it's the appearance and having somebody who can look at things with fresh eyes and pull those kinds of reports that are being requested, I think is important.
And the other thing that requested as part of this warrant article is that it essentially be contingent on the vote at the town where it may or may not be put on that warrant. So if it passes in that town, then it would trigger this to happen and if it fails, then there would be no appropriation made.
I'm okay with the fifty. I I really am not comfortable going beyond that.
I'm okay with it too.
Especially where, and I'm sorry, Jamie, but especially where the administration just put, you know, sharpened their pencils and they got the budget further down. I'd hate to put more, you know, additional funds back in there. So I'm good with the fifty.
Ditto what Shelley said. And I think Walpole should pay for it, even though I'm a Walpole taxpayer.
So Matt will be working on changing the language, correct? Correct. He'll be coming back to us for our meeting on the thirteenth with the appropriate wording. So that we can see it. Is everybody good with that?
Except for the wording about just using the word Walpole, if other towns decided to do this, they should be charged that as well. So because the wording should be in that county, then the district does this, not don't name a certain town.
I think that is exactly what he has in mind.
All right.
We had an opportunity to look directly at the articles of agreement when we were talking about this, so if you know some. Um, we had an opportunity to look directly at the Articles of Agreement when we were talking about this. So he knows exactly where in the Articles that it suits the need and such, so he's already got it started. Okay, so now in the renumbering scheme, I think we missed a warrant article for the high school. Um, so if we go back to Article uh, seven. Yeah, so we were um, twenty-four thousand for capital improvements um, to replace the inlet sub-ten tank with set funds to come from the reserve fund. I think we had a good presentation on this uh, the first time around and I'm not sure. I really want to wait for the this to be approved, but if that's the case, then I guess that's what we will do. All right, I think we're good. Going forward with that. Okay, so Article ten would be the last that we were looking to place. So have we received any permission of Articles? When is the last day of due date?
Tuesday.
The fourth, uh, before the budget hearing. Anything else that you would like to discuss with us before I open for public comment? I don't have anybody else. Do any members of the board have anything they'd like to bring up before I open for public comment? Hearing none. I do see that we have some members of the public here in addition to our administrators. I welcome you to the podium. If you've got something you'd like to speak to.
Welcome, residents. Um, I just want to say, first off, I know the pain of budget. I work for the Newport School District and we're going through the same thing. Um, I guess I just have a question and I don't know if it's because of the five towns or or um, what it might be. Um, but you say that this, the budget is going down overall seventeen cents.
Seventeen percent. Point, I mean, point seventeen percent.
So it's still going down, yes. Um, my question is why the huge increase in each town? Um, in Charleston, we're looking at both the Articles pass, it'll be two dollars and forty-three cents.
If all the Articles pass, it does increase more than the point seventeen percent. It was um, one point.
Right, but even the one article alone. Um, so I'm just wondering if you could help me to understand. I know I'm not the only one that is confused about that. If the overall budget is going down, why is even with this Article one, each town is significant. I know it's been talked about a couple of times already, um, Charleston being hit the hardest as usual. Um, so I'm just curious if you could, I, but it may not be today, but it will be, I'll have to do that.
Yep, perfect, thank you. Thank you.
Part of that answer, I had the same, exactly, the exact same question. Part of that answer is that the tax rates based on the general fund, um, which the number she showed later on a different screen and that number, uh, that gen total general fund is a, an increase from last year of six hundred and seventy-three thousand nine hundred and five dollars. There's other things, um, I think because we're not doing any building improvements or there's no transfer to capital reserves, that's why there that sixty-one thousand savings comes from.
Right, and and that other screen where it showed apples to apples, that includes the, if those were to pass. If we look at last year's budget, I mean, it's it's not apples to apples.
I guess it's not clear still.
Yeah.
I understand. That's a huge, huge increase after the one we just talked. We'll work on the error.
Are there any other thoughts or comments that anybody would like to make?
This is Leroy Watson. I am the district moderator and will be conducting the deliberative session. When it occurs, I have one suggestion for the drafting of the warrant articles beyond number one and two. And we're talking about the individual appropriations for um, work on the individual schools. Let's try and keep that presentation as consistent as possible among the different warrant articles, particularly related to the notes. I've noticed in when when we went through this, sometimes when we presented a number, we, in some of the articles, there was a follow-up of um, also explaining to the voter how much money was in that fund. In other articles, there wasn't. Sometimes there were presentations that says if passed, the money remaining would be so much. In other articles, it was not. So what I want to do and trying to manage the meeting to make it where that the discussion focuses on much on the the policy and the key issues people want. I want to reduce the number of questions as to people asking, why did you include the number in this article? And and the resulting number not in the next article, again, basically covering a similar type of appropriation among uh, the various buildings in the district. So to the extent that we can make those presentations consistent from article to article, we will probably reduce the number of incidental questions related to why did you do it differently in this article versus another article? That saves time. That allows the voters to focus on the key questions that we really want them to focus on rather than on procedural issues. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's something, yes, please. Okay, so uh, there were two, probably three warrant articles that should have had like if, if this article passes, the balance would be. The difference being there were multiple warrant articles that hit the same reserve balance. So if the primary request for capital reserves were to pass, that would reduce the balance available for the architectural drawings.
I understand the the issue of the presentation of different articles to address uh, funding expenditures from the same. But even outside of that issue, even if we took those away, there still are significant differences in the presentation. Whether or not you know, the the uh, the existing balance is given to the voters in that warrant article, whether or not um, and any kind of particular result would be, I I just urge strongly that we don't give people an opportunity to question why something is presented differently. Because essentially, and again, except for uh, sort of the issue of multiple explanations or multiple expenditures from uh, from the same town fund or or uh, district fund for the high school. Um, we don't need those questions at our meeting. We don't need to take that time. And uh, we get enough complaints about how we're there longer than we need to be. Um, and I want to be sensitive to the time of the voters, but I also want to be very sensitive to making sure that we can find uh, make sure that we're all on the same board, presenting the information in such a way that the voters are 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 looking at the issues that we really want them to look at, not differences in not minor differences in in presentations.
If nothing else that needs to come before this meeting, I will.
Motion to adjourn.
Certainly. Shelley?
Yes.
Hey, yes.
Oh, yes.
Very, yes. Yes, thank you all for coming. Really do appreciate you all coming on here tonight and we'll see you on Wednesday.
It's a must.